Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Fairbanks. There's a copy of the Opens Meeting Act. It's posted in the meeting room and it's accessible to the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A, Approve Agenda As Submitted. Item B, Receive and Place On File All Notices Pertaining To This Meeting. Item C, Receive And Place On File All Materials Have Any Bearing On This Meeting. Item D, Approval Of Minutes Of Regular Meeting On August 1st, 2016, As On File In The City Clerk's Office. Item E, Approval Of Treasurers Report Of Claims In The Amount Of $453,612.76. Item F, Approval Of Boswa Report Of Claims In The Amount Of $46,146.30. Item G, Approval Of Change Order Number One, A Decrease In The Amount Of $779.23 To R.L. Timon Construction, Inc., For The Alley Reconstruction 2016 Project, As Recommended By The Board Of Public Works. Item H, Approval Of Designated, A Special Designated License For St. Joseph's Catholic Church For A Special Event On October 15th, 2016, From 4:00 p.m. Until 7:00 p.m. At 612. High Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item I, Recommendation To The Nebraska Liquor Control Commission Approval Of Application For An Addition To Their Liquor License For Casey's Retail Company, Casey's General Store, Number 2702. License Number B-71-285 At 1116 North 6th Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item J, Resolution Number 5945 Approving The Request From Beatrice Area Chamber Of Commerce And Gage County Tourism To Close Highway 136, Which Is Also Known As Court Street From 4th Street To 6th Street And 5th Street From Perkins Street To High Street On December 3rd, 2016, From 6:00 p.m. To 7:00 p.m. For The Holiday Lighted Parade And Permission To Use Charles Park For Staging With Pictures With Santa, With A Santa Tent For Patrons To Purchase Pictures From Santa. Item K, Resolution Number 5946 Appointing A Committee To Review, Evaluate And Select The Best Possible Response To The Request For Proposals To Negotiate And Agree To Terms With A Responding Realtor And To Negotiate The Final Terms Of A Sale Contract To Be Presented To The City Council At A Later Date For The Final Purchase Of The Residential Home Located At 1923 Ella Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item L, Resolution Number 5947 Executing The Annual Certification Of Army Material Status Form For The Army Tank Located At Chautauqua Park And To Execute And Sign All Other Documentation To Authorize The Continued Future Display Of The Army Tank Located At Chautauqua Park. And Item M, Resolution Number 5948 Entering Into An Agreement Between The City Of Beatrice, Nebraska And GeoCom, Inc. For GIS Map Data Maintenance And Other Related Services For The Southeast Nebraska Region 911 System Pursuant To The GIS Data Maintenance Agreement. Is There Any Item That Any Council Member Wants Removed From The Consent Agenda? Phil?
I need to abstain on Number H, please.
On Item H, So Noted. Anybody Else? Anyone From The Public? Mr. Catlin?
Here I move that all the items listed on the Consent Agenda Be Approved, Accepted, And Are Ratified As Presented.
Second.
And Moved By Catlin And Seconded By Partey That All Items Under The Consent Agenda Be Approved. Your Vote, Please. And That Is Approved, 7-0. Next Item On The Agenda, We Have Resolutions. Resolution Number 5949 Executing The Indemnification Agreement With The City, I beg your pardon, With Beatrice Industrial LLC Related To The Cities Of Beatrice Application To The Nebraska Department Of Environmental Quality's Brownfield Assessment Grant Program On Behalf Of Beatrice Industrial LLC Relating To The Assessment Of Environmental Contaminants On Or Near Property Located At 500 Irving Street, Beatrice, Nebraska And Authorizing The Mayor And City Administration To Sign The Application On Behalf Of The City And Submit To The Department Of Environmental Quality.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5949 Be Passed And Adopted.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Morgan. That Resolution 5949 Be Passed And Adopted. Tobias?
The Beatrice Industrial LLC Is The Purchaser Of The Storkraft Building And Part Of That Purchase, They Understand And Know That There Are Some Environmental Concerns Along That Property. There Has Been A Phase Two Study Done, So They Are Aware Of That And What's There. But NDAQ Has A Grant Application Process In Which You Can Apply For Some Funding To Help Further The Assessment, Do Some Additional Drilling, Find Out Exactly What's There And How Far It Has Spread And What Needs To Be Done To Clean Up The Property. The Caveat Is, Though, Is Basically Only Municipalities Can Apply For That Grant. And So We Have Had Communications With NDAQ And They Are Okay With The City Applying On Behalf Of Beatrice Industrial LLC For That Grant. And So What You Have Before You Is First An Agreement Between The City And Beatrice Industrial LLC Which Ademnifies The City For Anything They May Find. And They Understand That We're Not Responsible For The Contaminations There And Beatrice LLC Will, Or The Beatrice Industrial LLC Will Be The One Picks Up All The Costs. The City's Not Paying For Anything. The Second Part Of The Resolution Then Basically Authorizes The City To Go Ahead And Sign The Application For Part Of This Assessment. There Should Have Been A New Resolution Waiting For You And You Showed Up Sitting On Your Desk, Not The One In The Package. We Updated Just A Little Bit. But That Is, In Essence, What This Resolution Is Asking For.
Anyone? Anyone From The Public? All Right, Your Vote, Please. That Is Approved, 7-0. Resolution Number 5949 Has Been Passed And Adopted. Next Item On The Agenda Is Resolution Number 5950 Entering Into An Agreement Between The City Of Beatrice And Unite Private Networks To Allow Unite Rights To Install And Maintain Third Party Facilities Upon The Utility Poles Of The City Pursuant To The First Amendment To Pole Attachment Agreement.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5950 Be Passed And Adopted.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Bilzbach. That Resolution 5950 Be Passed And Adopted. Discussion.
Unite Private Network Is A Fiber Company. They Have Strung In Quite A Bit Of Fiber Throughout The City Already, So This Is Just An Amendment To One Of The Pole Attachment Agreements That We Have. They Have Some Additional Stuff They Want To Hang On Our Poles. Pat Fies Has Reviewed It. He Is Comfortable With What They're Hanging And Where They're Hanging It At. And So This Agreement Essentially Authorizes Them To Proceed With That Work.
Dwight?
So Do We Put Limits On What They Can Do To That? I Mean, Long As We Give Them Permission Here, Can They Go Hang Some 50-Pound Object Up There?
No. No, There Are Restrictions In The Initial Pole Attachment Agreement As To Exactly What They Can Hang, Where It Has To Be, That To Provide Clearance. And If All Else Fails, We Can Just Have The Right To Kick Them Off And...
And Has To Be Approved By Someone In The City, Electrical Or Somebody?
Yep.
Thank You.
Just A Curiosity Question. How Many Poles?
This Agreement, I Don't Remember Off The Top Of My Head How Many Poles This Pole Is For. There's Usually A Separate Map. I Don't Remember How Many Poles This One Is. Greg, Do You Remember How Many Poles This One Is?
Uh, I Don't. For The Amendment Or For The Current One?
For The Amendment, I Think, Is What You're Asking For, Isn't It, Bob?
Yeah, For, Yeah.
How Many Attachments They're Going To Make?
Yeah.
I Thought They Talked About Initially Three, But I May Be Wrong.
Every Year What Happens Is Our Guys Go Out And Do An Inventory And Then We Build Them.
I'm Just Kind Of Curious.
I Think We Currently Build Them For, I Want To Say It's Somewhere Close To 100 Pole Attachments In Total.
Is That The Company That Turn That Stuff Down West Court?
I Believe That It Is, Yes. Those Along West Court Street Are Windstream Poles, Which Is Why They're Doing Some Work With, Before They Had This In Place, So.
Any Other Questions? Anybody From The Public? All Right, Gentlemen, Your Vote, Please. That Is Approved, 7-0. Resolution Number 5950 Has Been Approved. Next Item Is An Ordinance. Ordinance Vacating Lots 11, 12, And 13, Gage County Industrial Park's Second Addition To The City Of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I move That Said Ordinance Be Given Number 16-035. The Title Therefore Be Approved. The Rules Be Suspended And Said Ordinance Be Read By Number Only Three Times Tonight.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Partey. That Ordinance Number 16-035 Be Read By Title Only Three Times Tonight. Motion To Suspend The Rules Is Not Debatable. Your Vote, Please. That Is Approved, 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-035 By Number Only The First Time. Ordinance Number 16-035 By Number The Second Time. And Ordinance Number 16-035 The Third And Final Time.
Mayor, I move That Ordinance Number 16-035 Be Passed And Approved.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Cook. That Ordinance Number 16-035 Be Passed And Approved. Tobias?
This Ordinance Goes Along With The Next Ordinance. This Is The Location Where The Hatchery Is Looking To Build. We Have A Rule In Our Zoning Ordinance That You Can't Build A Building Across Lot Lines. In Residential Areas, We Can Simply Combine Lots. However, It's Not Allowed In Industrial Areas. And So The Only Way To Combine The Lots Is To Re-Plat It. And So That's What You See Before You Tonight Is A Re-Platting Of Those Three Lots Into One Lot. So The First Name Before You Is A Vacation Of The First Lot And Then The Second Ordinance Coming Back Will Be A Re-Plat Of That. Playing The Zoning Has Heard These And Recommended Both Of Them. Is That Correct, Greg?
That's Correct.
We've Done This In The Past, Haven't We?
What, Re-Plat A Property?
No. We Combined The Properties Out There.
I Don't Know Out In The Industrial Park If We Have Or Not. We Haven't As Long As I Can Remember, But It's Not Uncommon When We Do This In Other Places Around Town.
Any Other Questions? From The Public? All Right, Your Vote, Please. That Is Approved, 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-035 Has Been Approved. Next Item Is Item B, Ordinance Approving The Platte Of Hendrick's Addition To The City Of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I move That Said Ordinance Be Given Number 16-036. The Title Therefore Be Approved. The Rules Be Suspended And Said Ordinance Be Read By Number Only Three Times Tonight.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Partey. That Ordinance Number 16-036 Have The Rules Suspended And Read By Number Only Three Times Tonight. Motion To Suspend The Rules Is Not Debatable. Your Vote, Please. That Is Approved, 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-036 By Number Only The First Time. Ordinance Number 16-036 By Number Only The Second Time. And Ordinance Number 16-036 By Number The Third And Final Time.
Mayor, I move That Ordinance Number 16-036 Be Passed And Approved.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Bilzbach. That Ordinance Number 16-036 Be Passed And Approved. Discussion.
Again, Just As We Talked About, This Is Simply Re-Platting The Lots That We Just Vacated. The Only Thing That's Different Is The City Is The Applicant Since We Own The Ground. That's Really The Only Thing That's Different.
Any Other Questions? All Right, Gentlemen, Your Vote, Please. That Is Approved, 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-036 Has Been Approved. Next Is Item C, Ordinance Authorizing The Issuance Of Public Safety Tax Anticipation Bonds Of The City Of Beatrice, Nebraska In The Principal Amount Of Not To Exceed $600,000 For The Purpose Of Purchasing Public Safety Vehicles And Public Safety Equipment, Constructing Improvements To Public Safety Facilities And Miscellaneous Costs Associated Therewith, Directing The Application Of The Proceeds Of Said Bonds, Prescribing The Form Of Said Bonds And Directing The Determination Of Certain Terms Of Said Bonds Providing For The Levy And Collection Of Taxes To Pay The Same Providing For The Sale Of The Bonds Authorizing The Delivery Of The Bonds To The Purchaser.
Mayor, I move That Said Ordinance Be Given Number 16-037. The Title Therefore Be Approved. The Rules Be Suspended And Said Ordinance Be Read By Number Only Three Times Tonight.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Partey. That The Ordinance Be Given Number 16-037. Title Therefore Approved. Rules Suspended. Ordinance Be Read By Number Only Three Times Tonight. Motion To Suspend The Rules Is Not Debatable. Your Vote, Please. And That Is Approved, 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-037 By Number Only The First Time. Ordinance Number 16-037 By Number The Second Time. And Ordinance Number 16-037 The Third And Final Time.
Mayor, I move That Ordinance Number 16-037 Be Passed And Approved.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Cook. That Ordinance Number 16-037 Be Passed And Approved. Discussion, Please.
As We've Talked About In The Past, The City Looks To Issue Public Safety Debt Every About Three Years. It's Time To Do That Again. On Page 61 Of Your Package, You'll See That Linda Has Prepared A List Of Items That We're Looking To Cover With This Issuance. What You Have Before Is A Public, It's A Parameters Ordinance. Basically Sets Out The Parameters, Talks About It Being Less Than $600,000. See, It Talks About Annual Payments Of Less Than $210,000 Per Year. Repayment No Later Than June 15th Of 2019. And Not To Exceed 2%. The Latest Numbers That I Received From Emeritus Was An All-Inclusive Cost Of 1.73% For The Issuance Of The Bonds. What We'd Like To Do Is Have You Go Ahead And Proceed And Approve This Parameters Ordinance, Similar To What We Did With Boswa. As Emeritus Gets All The Documentation Completed, They'll Go Out, They'll Market The Bonds, Issue Us The Proceeds Then And We'll Proceed Rather Than Having Them Go Out And Issue Them, Try To Come Back And Set Timing Up And Do Some Of Those Things. What We're Looking For Is About $575,000. It'll Cover A Number Of Items That We've Already Purchased And Those Have Been The Reimbursement Resolutions We've Been Doing Over The Last Probably About Year. City Will Get Reimbursed For All Those Items And Then You See The Additional Items We Would Cover With This Issuance.
Questions? Dwight?
I See We Have Three Police Cruisers And One Ambulance. How Long Before We'll Need To Add Into That Inventory Count? Are These Three Going To Be Bought Right Away Or Is That Going To Be Over A...
Those Three Have Already Been Purchased. So They've Been Here For What, Almost A Year Now, Chief?
Not That Long.
Eight Months?
Six.
Six?
About Six.
So They've Been Here About Six Months Already.
How Long Before We Need To Replace?
We Don't Have Any More Budgeted This Year. I Think We Don't Have Anything Budgeted Until The Next Budget Cycle, So FY '18.
Ambulance Also?
Ambulance, No. We Have One That Comes Every Year. The Last One We've Purchased Was Out Of MFL Money Or Out Of The, Excuse Me, Ambulance Reserve Fund.
Every Couple Years.
Every Couple Years. And So We Don't Look To Have Another One Here For A Couple Years.
Yes, Rich?
Chief, What's A Police Electronic Ticketing Note?
That Is Electronic, It's A Ticketing Device That He Asked For. Basically You Would Take Your Driver's License, Scan It Through, It Would Automatically Print The Citation And We Said Noted That Item. We Did Not Include It In This Issuance.
Oh, Okay. I'm Sorry. I Think You Should Have Had It.
No, But Hell No.
We'll Get It, We'll Get It For You. Bless Your Clay Ball.
Any Other Questions? All Right, Your Vote, Please. And That Is Approved, 7-0. Ordinance Number 16-037 Has Been Passed And Adopted. Next Item Is The Public Forum. Purpose Of The Public Forum Is For The Presentation Of An Item By The General Public To The Council For Consideration At A Later Date. No Discussion Or Action Will Be Taken By The City Council At This Time. Does Any Council Member Have Anything For The Public Forum? From The Audience? All Right, Next Item On The Agenda Is The Continual Discussion Of 407 Court Street.
Yes, The Saga Continues. Pursuant To Our Most Recent Discussion Here And Update In Regards To The Status Of 407 Court And Its Demolition, As We Note, The Last Time We Did Draft Up A Contract Generally Pursuant To The Terms That Were Discussed Here, We Did Have Follow-Up Discussions In Regards To Issues Related To The Backed Taxes And Who Would Pay For That Should The Property Be Acquired Through A Number Of Potential Means Including Foreclosure Or Lean Or Something Else That Was Done On 407 Court. So I Took That Back And We Made Some More Changes Pursuant To Kind Of The Discussions We Had At Council, Submitted Those To The Attorneys For The Black Crow. And Subsequent There Too, We Did Receive A Response To The Draft By Them In Late July And Then That Was Panned Off To All Parties Involved. So That Would Have Been David Lang, Who Is Not Represented At This Time. And Then Lyle Coning Who Represents Timon Construction, Myself And Kay Raggin's Attorney, Ms. Jacobson. Ms. Jacobson Provided That To Us. We All Looked It Over. I Provided It To Lyle Coning And Bob Timon. And Then There Was An Extensive Amount Of Time Where Bob Was Out Of Town For The RNC. So As Soon As He Got Back, He Met With Lyle Coning And They Did Provide A Number Of Issues And Changes They Had In A Letter Due To August 2nd, 2016. And So Those Are Again Handled About To All Parties And Responses Went Out Again. I Addressed My Issues That Were Of Concern To The City And Then We Waited For The Response Of The Black Crow's Attorney, Ms. Jacobson. Ms. Jacobson Then Responded And Said, Why Don't We All Get Together And Have A Phone Conference With Just The Attorneys? We'll Go Through Every Paragraph And We'll Discuss Our Issues And Recommend Language. We Did Undertake That Effort And Lyle Came To My Office And We Did My Phone Conference, Went Through All The Issues That We Had. I Was Tasked With Making The New Draft And There's So Many Drafts Going On On This Thing, But I Was Able To Undertake That Effort. Lyle Was Able To Provide Some Language For Us And That New Draft Was Drafted Again And Sent Out Early Last Week To All Parties. Subsequent There Too, We Received Just Today A List Of Issues From The Owner Of 405 Court, The Black Crow's Attorney. And So The Gist Of It Is, Is I Think In Regards To The City Issues, We're Essentially Close Except On One Issue In Regards To Indemnification Of The City. Other Than That, Every Other Issue In Here, I Believe Is An Issue Between The Property Owners Of Black Crow And R.L. Timon Construction As The Contractor. And They're Debating The Level Of Basically Liability For Damages That May Occur If Something Were To Happen And Where The Line Is Drawn And They Cannot Agree On That. And So That's Been The Back And Forth For The Last Couple Of Weeks Trying To Specifically Figure Out What Would Be Liable For The Contractor And What The Contractor Wouldn't Be Liable For If Something Happens. Anywhere From Just A Brick Falling Off One Building All The Way Up To Unfortunately A Complete Collapse. And That's Where They're At. And They're Not, In My Opinion, They're Not Close Right Now. So They're Still Working It Out. But This Was, This Letter Was Provided To Us Today Via Email To Both Me And Lyle. And So I Addressed All The City Issues In It And I Think We're Fine, But It's Unfortunately Out Of Our Hands, So.
Rich?
If They Don't Get This Resolved, We Go Back To Square One. Say Bob Pulls Out, We're Just Back To Square One, Correct?
Then We Have To Start Over, Yeah. Because We Don't Have Any Other Contractors. There Were No Other Bids Received When We Bid Out The Project. So We'd Have To Re-Bid Too, Because There's No One To Fall Back To.
I Was Up Of The Impression After The Last Conference Call That We Were Really Nearing Some Completion Of This Contractual Arrangement. And I Think Right Now We're Just About As Far Apart As We Ever Have Been And That's Really, Really Disappointing And I'm Really Growing Weary Of This.
As Is The Public.
So.
So Is Mr. Timon's Bid From Couple Years Ago Still Intact? The Price That He Quoted On Us?
In Our Discussions, I Know The Mayor's Had Some Discussions With Timon And I've Had Discussions With Timon. I Don't Think His Attorney, He'd Be Paying An Attorney To Negotiate A Contract That He Wasn't Willing To Follow Through On. So I Mean, I Think That'd Just Be Throwing Money Away At This Point, But So.
Okay. So The Saga Continues, I Guess. Any Other Comments Or Questions From The Public? All Right, Next Item Is The City Administrator's Monthly Report.
Yes, Once Again You Have It Here. We'll Just Hit A Couple Of Highlights. One Thing People Probably Have Some Questions On, The Adjoining Building Ordinance. We Issued That Here, Came Into Effect, I Believe, Right Around Fourth Of July. You'll Note In Rob Marrow's Report, He Stated That He Sent Out 118 Letters To Adjoining Building Owners. Sees Received 65 Voluntary Registrations Already, Leaving Them 53 That Then We'll Make Contact With And Follow Up On. But I Believe The Response So Far To Just A Letter Notifying Them Has Been A Good Response There.
If I May, I Just, I Believe He Received A Number Of Them, A Pile From A Specific Insurance Company That Provided That Just Today, Because I Got An Email About It. So That Number Will, That 53 Will Decrease Significantly Because He Filled This Out Last Week.
Public Properties Have Been Busy. If You Haven't Been Out To Hannibal Park, Stop Out There. You'll Notice The Two Fields That We're Looking At, That We're Building North Of The Complex Have Been Pretty Much Built. All The Poles Have Been Installed. A Lot Of The Fencing Has Been Put Up. In Fact, The Fence Company's Supposed To Be Done By Wednesday Of This Week. Once They're Done, We'll Can, We'll Go Back And Work On In-FIELDS, Irrigation, All Those Things. We've Got Bids For The Irrigation. They Came In Under Bid. So We're Working On That Project Completed. Scott Street Ballfields Also Had Some Improvements That Were Made After The Season Was Completed. You Now Can Park Anywhere In The Complex And Travel Anywhere Else And Be On Hard Surface. It's All ADA Compliant. The Last Section Was To Go From The Fields On The South Side Out To That South Parking Lot That We Created. We Paved A Couple Handicapped Parking Solves Out There, Paved Sidewalk All The Way In And Added Some Trees, Some Features There. Some Trees Had To Go. They Were Ash Trees And We Knew That Their Lifespan Was Short. Figured Might As Well Get Started, Remove Some Of Those, Planted Some New Trees In That Area. So If You Haven't Been Out There, Take A Look At That, That Facility. It's Come Around.
Public Properties Was Also Busy This Weekend Cleaning Up The Distasteful Vandalism That Occurred At The Beatrice Public Library. And If You See These Guys, Thank Him For A Job That They Spent A Lot Of Time. It Cost The City A Lot Of Money And Labor And But It Was Something That Was Necessary And Appreciate What They Did.
Also Doing A Problem Of Properties, A Standing Bear Trail. If You, That's The Trail That Goes From Dempsters To Recycling Center And Then All Out Of Town. All The Rock Has Been Laid. I Believe Mark And James Just Need To Go Out And Verify That's The Way They Want And See If There's Any Other Places That Need To Be Touched Up There. The Concrete's Been Poured And So There's, I Think The Bridge Decking Has To Be Done Yet And Some Of Those Things. I Believe That's Till September 15th To Finish That Contract. There Also Has Come Back In And Plant The Grass And Do Those Types Of Things. And So We'll Get That Project Rounded Up And Completed Here Shortly. Couple Items From The BPW Meeting That I Just Want To Make Sure We Touch On Here. One Is The MPBD Rate Outlook. The Initial Rate Outlook By MPBD Is A Rate Increase, Overall Rate Increase Of .6%. It All Has To Do With Transmission Rates. They Are Recommending A 0% Production Rate Increase But A .6% Transmission Rate Increase. Again, We Would Pay Transmission Charges Regardless Of Who Our Energy Supplier Is. We'll Pay That Transmission Fee. And So That Is Their Recommendation. If You Read Through The Minutes Of The BPW Meeting, You'll Note That MPBD Kind Of Went Through Some Other Scenarios That May Happen That Are Out There, All Of Which Would Naively Impact Their Rates. And Then The Other Thing I'll Note Is That We Have Some Different Meetings Coming Up, But We're Going To Have A Review Of The Budget At The Work Session On August 29th. So And Then I'll Come Back To You For Some Voting And Approval At The First Meeting In September.
Okay. Any Questions Of Tobias? All Right, Gentlemen, Our Next Regular Scheduled Council Meeting Is Going To Be On Tuesday, September 6th At 7:00 p.m. In These Chambers. We Will Not Have A Work Session Next Week, Which Is Our Scheduled Work Session Date, But We Will Have A Special Work Session And City Council Meeting On The 29th. You Indicated At A Location To Be Announced.
My Understanding Is The School Board's Having A Special Meeting Here And So We Will Either Have To Go To City Hall Or We'll Go To The Library.
Okay.
We'll Figure Out Which One Is Available And...
All Right.
We'll Figure Out Which One's Available.
Very Good.
This Is Tobias's House.
There You Go.
If You Want To.
Mr. Catlin?
Here, I move That The Beatrice City Council Going To Close Session At 7:30 p.m. For The Protection Of Public Interest To Discuss Real Estate.
Second.
Moved By Catlin, Seconded By Bilzbach. That We Go Into Closed Session For The Protection Of Public Interest To Deal With Real Estate. Your Vote, Please. And That Is Approved, 6 To 1. With Councilman Partey Abstaining.
No, I Think I voted No, Didn't I?
No, I think I voted no, didn't I?
I beg your pardon, with Councilman Partey voting no.
So is there discussion allowed on this? We have in the past.
We can, if you like, yes.
Usually we do it before the vote. I just don't know why we're going into public session on the item we're going into for, I think it's something that should be community news. We've talked about this the whole way, and why not do it now?
This is, I think, different. This is a different item that we're going to discuss.
I think it is.
We, I sent the email out to you and let you know what it would be. Basically, we need to set a price.
Right. I don't know that that needs to be...
We don't really want to have that discussion out open as to what our price is and how much we're willing to accept on some of those things.
That's correct.
I don't think you do.
We're not trying to be realtors and make money on this bill, are we? Are we trying to make profit?
I don't think you want to discuss that in an open session.
Okay, I lost.
Okay. Is anybody still on?